All right, start with the roll call.
Roxanne Tapsky in here.
Chris Donald in my boardroom.
Tim Kramin here.
I see three here.
Bonnie Gier in here.
All right, we have the approval admit for four twenty-eight and for five one. Have we all had a chance to look at them?
Yep.
Any corrections? Can you?
I'll make a motion to accept. The minutes are four twenty-eight, twenty-five, and five one, forty-five.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yep.
I'll make the motion that we seal those for five years.
You have to roll call that one?
Yes. And they're sealed because of the first week of the term personally.
So, still for five years?
Yes.
Second?
I see.
All right.
Yes.
We're up then. Chris? Tim, yes?
My yes.
Thank you.
All right, we have another oath of office. So this one is for Christine Maynard. Is that not right? For trustees of the trust fund for one year. So, at this point, we just need to, a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept.
All right, in favor?
I'm going to do it now.
We have three.
Please jam it. Three. John Mollin and Christine.
John's got the three-year spot, Christine's got the one-year spot. And typically, add the chair, right?
Yeah.
Oath of office? Oh, no, sorry, tax credits and exceptions. Do we have to read these one by one, right? We just want to assess them.
Yeah.
All right.
Right, recommendations, so you might want to say there's, I mean, if they're all recommended, you might want to say Avatar recommends all of them, or Avatar recommends four, but whatever.
So Avatar recommends six. Six applications. Where are these?
They might not all be for the same, though. Are they all for, um...
These are all for the same, yeah.
So they're all for what? Veterans tax credit or...
For... All of it. No, Avatar veterans, my bad, veterans tax credit.
There might be mixed.
Yeah, that's why I'm looking at their all veterans.
Okay.
Yep. So we have six for veterans. So, one, two, three, four, five, six, and six. Veterans tax credits to be approved.
I'll make a motion to approve. One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we also have seven denials. For on that part. So, okay, there's been ran a claim wide. So we have motion to accept these?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation from...
You.
All set.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And it was a process to go through.
Because they want to, yeah, people can with file.
Wrong.
Apply for, probably can get in touch with them and let them know how to apply or appeal. All right, Tony here?
I didn't see no.
No? All right, Jim?
So, uh, we've been having discussions for some time about passing a little bit of, uh, kind of sort of hardware, uh, um, you know, it was, uh, an attempt to, to build a new assembly down the side, uh, um, years ago, uh, to, uh, to go even to, uh, uh...
Interesting.
...pull a lot of money in, uh, you know, that anybody was quite feasible, um, but given the fact that we've got this self-managed tower, money dedicated to, uh, the, uh, the highway facility, and, uh, the fact that we've got some money in there, I'm not sure exactly, you know, I believe it's sixty-five thousand or thereabouts. Also, we do a vision of the, uh, the right maintenance, um, the tower, um, there's more money coming in, so we would like to, uh, take a look at the piece of wood in our vision, um, four more days, um, we haven't got lots yet to look at it, but it's, uh, it's time to go all the way back because, uh, the, the, uh, one, uh, for you guys, uh, is, uh, uh, maybe the best way for all of the people to come up with a subcommittee type thing, um, hopefully we could get a few people who are interested in, uh, helping along the process, uh, you know, chasing down, uh, contract fees and costs and things of that nature, um, I think it would, uh, you know, just, just be more transparent and, uh, not something that one, you know, that's really attempting to do, uh, uh, John Holland has been vicious enough to, uh, say that he'd help out, maybe he would, um, give, um, for the work on the, on the previous, it comes up, um, we, we own a tower, we go, go, actually, more often people do, uh, for, uh, Rochester and, uh, the, uh, which is, uh, Stan, uh, Stan Richard, John and, uh, uh, we got time to work, um, and again, it's a little kind of, uh, it's a lot different than by truck, but we, that, uh, you know, you could probably talk to him, get a basic idea, and then you would, you'd probably have to pay something, I would think, to market an actual one that, uh, that, uh, is sent to the world, so I'm just here to kind of, uh, try to look, you guys, if you don't want it, uh, any suggestions, or, uh, any, uh, special forming the, uh, any subcommittee that I need.
So, yeah, so making sure I understand, what you're looking for right now is to get the board's idea about forming a exploratory committee to add on to the highway?
Yes.
Down the salt ship?
Yes.
Up here?
Yes.
Okay.
Not down the salt ship.
So adding a couple more bays to the current garage?
Yes, and, you know, that's, uh, you've got, uh, you know, two new trucks that, uh, that sit, uh, be sitting outside, you know, going to, and, uh, you know, it's all a bit of a power, you know, I don't think, uh, any of you guys don't understand the value in keeping those trucks inside, um, it makes a huge difference, um, which is why we give, you know, ten plus years generally, either have a power here compared to, uh, you know, the ten months that, uh, training, six, seven years, uh, I think, uh, what, one of that was, uh, twenty years old, and still, uh, pretty good, so, uh, that's, uh, that's the value, you know, keeping it inside, and, um, you know, even to Washington, you know, at a time, you have to go inside, it will freeze up, so you just get so much more.
How many bays are you looking at possibly at?
Four. Four, and then an office, bathroom, uh, break room, and presser room, tool room. So basically, basically put that first part, the office, the bathroom, because of where the sewer line comes out, that would be the first, the first thing going on for this right-hand side as you're looking at, at the doors.
Yep.
So the sewer line comes out right there, so you would, you would want the office to the right, the bathroom to the left, hook into that sewer line, because it's up, I mean, you can see it's right out of the ground.
So you'd be looking to extend towards...
Yes.
Okay. Where the pit used to be.
Yeah, it would just, it would just extend, extend down that way, be approximately eighty. Uh, we've got a rough drawing and stuff, but like he said, we're just, he was just trying to get the, uh, the feel for how you guys felt about it.
What kind of build would you guys be looking at, steel, steel?
Yeah, it'd be the steel with the pitchmill roof.
Yep.
And we try to have a design so that it pitches towards the back, uh, that way there you don't get the snow sliding off the front, especially if you had a, so you have like an office, a man door, uh, right at the end of the building there in that first section, you'd have a man door there, and then you have four, fourteen-foot garage doors instead of the twelve-footers, which the air in the, the jet barely gets through there. We do have one fourteen-foot door, and I, and I, I've got an operator that, or a driver can drive in and out with no problems as far as getting in and out. Right now, when we take the trucks out, uh, there's two of them on the narrower doors, and we used the loader in the last one, but the two narrow doors, you have to, someone's got to be guiding you all, because it is literally two inches on each side of the truck that could put the wind and all that on.
Yep.
When the wings are off, it's not, it's not a problem. Um, when the wings are on, and over the time, you've got to, you've got to have that guy for us back in the world.
Chris, I'd be interested to hear your opinion on it.
I'd love for committee, I really do, I think that, um, I like to hear more of the citizens. However, in the past, committee, um, outcomes have been really received well from boards, so before that would even occur, I would like to know that, you know, we would be very interested in, you know, what the citizens say, and then obviously, you know, however, I do say, if we're going to buy these very expensive pieces of equipment, I don't understand why they would ever sit outside.
Um, I, I'm not also that, um, you know, I'm not sure, uh, have a whole barn, I suspect, John, I think, has, uh, that's in green, this is, I, you know, we're seeking them out, uh, to be explored, but the fact of that, between the money we have, you know, funding a general, uh, the tower, yeah, the tower could make at least most of the, uh, from, uh, provision, so, uh, we can fortunate by the trucks and stuff to keep the money from taxation, uh, you know, not exist, and, um, because, uh, you know, it's just, it takes a long to, uh, to say, look, and let money to actually buy it out, uh, the trucks be sitting outside for twenty years, I think, that we, we would...
So we're going to make this investment, then we're pretty much saying you guys are going to stay up here, definitely?
Yeah.
And there's no intention of ever going down there?
So I would guess that as well, like Chris, um, you know, it's going to jam out and, uh, the thing about, um, what we do, it's extremely full and everything, and that, you know, stuff breaks down, and we grab it back, you know, the loader, and it's, you know, it's as fast as you can get on half-lan, hot rods, not fly, uh, you know, we would, we would be in there way pretty much all the time, or a lot of the time, you know, in a shared building. I don't think that building for the, um, you know, town facility down there, meaning the town office and recent fire making down there is probably, or some other remote location for that, uh, but, uh, you know, as far as us staying here, I think it's plenty big enough, even, I'm, I'm sure the town is going to go through some more, I don't know, fifteen or twenty years for sure, and maybe more than, but, um, we see it, but either way, um, you know, with four more days, uh, I think we'd be pretty well set, you know, thirty, thirty years in the future, I don't see us needing an entire new building if we're...
So can I ask, I mean, you guys, so all of your equipment, for the most part, loaders and everything are down there, and all the work on them you have to bring off here?
Nope, they're up here.
They're all up here?
The only, the only thing that's down there is a backhoe, in case the loader breaks down.
Okay.
And so we load, load...
So then you go from here down there?
Yeah, so when we come in, that's the first thing we do, is we come in, we bring, take the loader checked out, bring the loader down, and then we come back up here, we get the trucks checked out, we fire those up, we back those out, and then we all go down together, and then typically, uh, unload the trucks for the first load, and then as you need, as you need material, you come back and load your own truck, and we put the loader right down there. At the end of the storm, we put the trucks back in, we take the hunk piles off up front, we put the trucks back in, and then we go down and pick up the loader and bring the loader back and drive that aside, so those are in here, and, uh, with the four bays, uh, right now, the... So those are in here and uh with the four bays, uh right now, the uh smaller truck has been staying outside. And the, the new one ton stays outside. We do have the chipper, uh I could be all focused off shed with our full patch that we have or patch and hole. So uh what, what that would enable us to do is we'd be able to put the new trucks, uh put the trucks over on the, the new bays with the fourteen foot doors and then leave the loader over on this other side, put the smaller truck in on this other side, put the chipper in and the one ton in. So that would, that would take up the four existing bays and then that would leave us one bay to work on stuff that would be open at all times. Um it wouldn't be something private, that's, that's what we're talking about.
The church is not going to, we're not, not us, you know, what it sounds to come up to uh to put something in. And this kind of deal for one hundred dollars and something to do with that, that's a little hard. But it's uh certainly not actually great coming out, not much creature comes into it.
Tony, what do you have?
Um I agree with Tracy, I've been on some of the subcommittees and uh, you know, we put the time and effort in and then it doesn't really go anywhere from there. Not really listened to. Um I think it's a good idea to get the people involved and work on this and uh getting the trucks and stuff. And all the money that we put into those, it's letting them last, so I think it's a, an idea to look into for sure.
So I would, I would, I would point out, probably the thing to do first before we start, um you know, start getting into this more and more is to explore the, explore the um, the down payment, the money that we have available right now. And then see what the cost might be for, you know, a ballpark, uh either for one of these other, you know. You can go right online and, and put in square footage of a building, what you're looking for for doors and all that stuff and get a pretty good idea of square, what it's gonna cost you square foot for a heated building, how the building is. Uh and then see exactly what we're getting uh for revenues from the tower to see if that would, that would take care of the payment uh each year for that bond. Before we get too deep into it.
So that's something you guys would be doing, right?
Well, yeah, 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 that's what I'm saying, it's, it's, it's something, it's something to, I mean, you don't go out shopping for a car if you can't afford one. Uh if, if, if you're, if you can't afford it, you gotta do, say, oh, I need to save up some more money to put a bigger down payment, or I just use what I've got. And that's the reality of it, so we're, we're trying to do this uh with revenues that are being created by that tower and um.
In that case, if you want to get that information for us and come back and we'll go from there?
Yeah, we can, it's just, like he said, he was just trying to present, see what you guys' feeling was on it as far as adding on to that building.
I mean, it sounds like the general consensus is that we are all about making sure that the, the equipment is taken care of and covered and to the best of, you know, your ability, so.
Yeah, and, and you know, and the, and the thing is, is basically, uh you know, we're not looking for bonds, we're just looking for the leads and the leads are uh to keep, obviously, keep the uh trucks and the equipment uh in a heated atmosphere, they, they do last longer and.
Oh, absolutely.
We, we, you know, we can go from there. So I, I think that if uh we get, we get the numbers, uh rough numbers and, and see what that revenue is coming in from that and see what it would be. So I think there's a little bit of homework that we could do now that, you know, we, we get a feeling that, you know, we're all on the same page and.
If you want, we'd take a drop poll and, you know, I thought everybody in favor of them moving forward in that process? Yep? Scott?
Yeah, and we'll, we'll be.
Perfect. All right. All right. Website.
That was me, um is there, is there like a book for the website? Kim said that she can only do the calendar, so I, I just wanted to make sure that she's up and running.
Oh, absolutely, so I have, uh, so I put the other train packs that I can bring over to you.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, there's no actual book from, uh, Tom Cloud, but there is what's called a train thing I put together, so.
Okay.
I can drop that off.
So I mean, well, just, just further on that from the website, um I guess, me, I'm not a social media person, but what do we have? What does the town have for social media?
Right now, it has YouTube, Facebook and Instagram.
Official accounts?
Yes.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, so there is Facebook.
YouTube?
Instagram and Facebook. And they're all, what's called, connected on the bottom of the screen, or bottom of the website. You can click on the icon and it will bring you to the page. Absolutely.
Yeah, we're putting out on those, maybe some information, we're putting out actual.
Yeah, that's all we're putting up.
Really busy, it's.
On YouTube, on YouTube, and then they're also connected to our Facebook pages and, and Instagram. They're not streamed live, but the link for the stream is put on there.
Make sure the license is valid if you want.
Exactly, good job!
That's the only thing I know about. I have a question about the website, um I believe there was something in the order articles about getting G I S set up on, where could we go? We need to follow, we're more often here. She's, she's the contact person for that, you know, you can find out from her. I know they were in the works, they were working on it.
Right, she is, no, she's not making friends, she's.
She is back this week.
Back this week, that's what, yeah.
We, we did let her have vacation this week, so.
Yep.
But we can follow up with her to see where she is, so.
Moving on, credit card discussion.
Exactly, yeah.
Seeing the receipts, they're working.
I don't know what the, the purpose of this, but I do have something to add to this thing to go. So um Tony asked me today, so she is, she is the credit card overseer, I guess, you know.
Yep, that's our creator.
Um but she's not comfortable, or at least I, and I agree with her, that she should only be the only person to be the, kind of the contact. So we're gonna add, um, she addressed Kim, and then I can suggest and Tracy, just that there should be at least one board to select them to have some oversight and then Kim.
Absolutely.
So I'm just gonna throw that up and make the motion to add Tracy and Kim as an additional contact.
I'll second that.
Credit card, uh credit card.
So I'll second that, introduction? Being on, wallpaper?
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah, the only thing is, um.
My main question, okay?
That's okay, um, no, the only thing we could discuss on credit card, you said yes. Right now, um we have, um between Highway and myself, we definitely have a big system there. He takes, um, brings me the receipts, G L numbers written on it, and we wants to look it out. And I hold the receipts until the credit card, um, statement comes in, in the month of March, about to pay that. So I know Jared, you do a lot of um purchase orders, so I didn't know how you, you and um Scott wanted to do it. Scott, you dictate property of the, the G L number on it.
I don't see anything to do with it, just like I remember.
Yeah. Yeah, cause and it can bring it over as soon as you have the receipt or printout, cause I keep a folder with all of them, does that work for all of you guys?
Yeah, well, and, and I logged in, so I have an account, so if you, if you end up, a receipt gets lost in the show, then we can recall. The only, the only thing I, I had a question on was, and I don't know what the, if the, I didn't know what the um, the limit was until I took the card off a piece of paper and the limit was underneath, I thought it was kind of high, but I think it's not really that high if it's for all of them.
It is, it's not.
Okay, so yeah, so I did, I did see that amount in there. Normally, we would make a, a purchase that, I mean.
Well, without coming up.
Yeah, we would, we would use it for, you know, buying pink tower, Walmart or something like that and then.
So the five, I think, five presents are all, one, it's one account, five parts.
Right.
Well, today, cash back was turned off, so you won't be able to get cash back.
If I may, while we're on the same subject, like the cars, um we go get the fire truck and we can use the credit card with dual for that. We're very good, we can spend over the time, I like to do, and just help make sure.
Probably.
I know we said that, yeah.
Probably what you wanna do is call, because when they see something down in Louisiana, it might go off.
Right, yeah, and mostly, also just comes uh if over a thousand, so I just have to make sure you guys are aware of that.
Yeah, where is that?
Uh we don't have the exact date, it's gonna be sometime, they, uh, they said second weekend, we don't know what the exact date is. Yeah, it's coming right up.
If any of us left and would like to see the receipts as the month is over, one, they're in the red folder, is it the pink tower?
Yeah.
Pink tower, okay.
Red folder and pink tower, this is um kind of, and then you'll get one obviously where it comes out.
All right. Emergency management.
Jerry, I'm uh emergency manager right here in the fire. Um so as far as emergency management goes, I didn't put it on the sheet, there's really not much to talk about this month. Uh we did have a meeting, myself and Chief Ferguson, uh with the state, uh about some, about some stuff, mostly related to relocating students and event, and things like this. However, in the meeting, we did identify some deficiencies in this building that is designated as our emergency operations center. Uh we don't have a phone in the building, uh we don't have cable TV to monitor weather uh and, or a TV. So uh we are in the process of working on uh correcting those issues, I know Tony was working on getting his phone uh over here in the building and uh.
I'm sorry, Jerry, I'm gonna interrupt, that's actually, you remind me of something, I need to try one, bring it up real quick.
Okay.
It seems like we're missing a phone. Because Tony was, I talked to Tony the other day and he mentioned that he'd be able to identify where all the phones were except for one of them. And supposedly, there were two there listed as in slot for the office, but it's only one phone.
Well, I don't believe there's the phone, the additional phone is anywhere in the, you know, like it might have gotten put back with my electronic take back there or something. Cause if something wasn't being used, we'll try and clean and take it upstairs and then electronic take back there, we'll just take it away. That's what I would suspect now.
All right, cause that would give us the additional phone that he needs, so.
Yeah, we don't, I was gonna, you can check the destro's.
No, I checked all the destro itself, all right, so then we need to order from, sorry, I mean.
Tony, Tony does have the ability now as well, um, she does have the ability to actually call up the phone, but she has a lot of her, her call tab.
Yeah.
She's able to tell you exactly what, and then wherever that was allocated as far as the permission, if it was updated, it was all.
Well, that's, and that's when her and I talked, because we're actually giving cross referencing things and we came up that there was that one phone in the D O S office that you're flipping two and said one.
Oh, no, sorry, I misunderstood.
No, no, no worries, I'll get that, what's called, yeah. So that's, and then she's also been working on what's called, making sure that the menus are all correct, but, sorry, sorry, Jerry.
No, no, it's okay. Um and then uh Deputy Chief Manchester is working on requiring a donation for a TV, well, some sort of a, you know, laid out in crystal ball here. So perhaps we can slide it more in the files.
I have an extra, I have an extra TV part for one.
There we go.
Operating out tomorrow.
Awesome, sounds good, so those are, that's what we got, like, on, we're trying to get our, our emergency operations center, or you'll see.
Like, well, I'll even go on a TV to you.
Yeah, I'll, 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 you know, I think he's already secured one, I don't know if he's there, perhaps Walmart, I think.
Okay. So you use the TV car?
Yeah, we could definitely use that.
Done.
Um so as far as emergency management goes, it's been, um, so that's kind of all we're doing now. The only other thing kind of on the, in the background is this ore generator, it's gonna be kind of a drawn up process, grant process, we kind of have to be, we're granting a lot this year. Um we don't have a lot, a lot of stability and that right now, so. Um so that's all I have for emergency management.
We'll try to generate support costs.
Uh we'll get in pricing back, uh it's been kind of a big, uh anywhere from a hundred and twenty-five thousand to seventy-five thousand, so. Um we're not quite positive yet, it's uh, we're waiting on the price back from probably the most realistic contract, I think, so we'll see. Uh that, that, I'm hoping it's gonna be slightly less close.
So with the intent of doing the emergency generator of the school is to be able to use it as a um shelter place or something?
As a, as a shelter, yes, uh it's identified in our master plan, uh for the school to be a shelter and then, and so, kind of, disaster in town. Um but we really couldn't use it, cause in most events that we have in this community, it loses power. Um and it kind of also comes along with, it could become an emergency in itself if we're in the middle of a winter and the school loses power, so. Those are, are kind of, they're kind of doubled in importance right there, so if the school not having key or lights and ability to open stuff like that would be a concern. Oh, but hopefully we can get some grant funding, uh if not, mostly if putting on a dial in.
So, all right, I, again, apologize for interrupting you before, um, so we need to talk about getting a, your personal phone for that. You don't have one in here at all.
There's not a phone in this building whatsoever.
Right, so a few, the projects, yeah, 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 so what are your thoughts on that?
So we can talk with Tony about that, we can change the contact, we can change the.
Oh, yeah, she's been able to consolidate.
So, yeah, so, so if you want, so if you want, Scott, do you wanna follow up and ask her about getting a phone, since her is the first one to see it come on?
Yeah, I guess, here's the other question, getting cable TV about into the building, you know, it's on the building, but it's not on the building, uh so I'm hopeful that I'll have some explaining at some point.
And.
There's some streaming options you can go up there to do, like every TV you got, you go right down there.
So it depends on, uh, if you're getting a smart TV, then yeah.
Yeah, yes, if you have one that'll watch the movie, whether, whether you're.
Right. Well, yeah, if you're getting a smart TV, then what's called, you can come with a, already built in.
Yeah, I'm just looking for the spectrum, for the cost of spectrum, cause even if you stream through the TV to get like the, so this, you have to be another account.
So, I mean, emergency management, where does that funding come from?
They're the one, it's five hundred dollars.
So.
Yeah, I mean, we could use that if we have to, we just, I just didn't know what.
I'd be curious to know what the cost is.
Yeah, I'll, 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 I'll get back to you on that.
Okay.
It's not like, it's not a huge drug, I think, we've gone this long, I think another month or two will be okay.
Okay.
Um we'll find a way to work around it.
So what we, in the meantime, we definitely want a phone, we want a phone for you.
Yeah, I think phone is, is pretty critical to have in the building.
I agree.
Is this some sort of special phone or?
You have an X phone?
I'm not sure if it's the, there was a second phone, then we can look into that tomorrow.
Okay.
Uh if it's one that we're hooking into that system or not.
If it's one that we're hooking in that system, that'd be great.
Right, yeah, and it's, it's one that's not being used.
Right, so we. So if you bring it over and drop it, Kim, Tony can certainly decipher and maybe we can use it.
Do you want to bring a vote, the office in at the fire station?
Well, I think that what's called, Tony can actually set it up, so it does that.
Yeah, and again, I think that's a discussion if we wanna have a separate. Yeah, and again, I think that's a discussion if we want to have a separate, I, I have a separate.
Because right now.
Separate line in here, or.
Excuse me, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief? There's a, what's called, you have three phones downstairs, right?
Oh, yeah.
With different, yeah, with different numbers?
So, so I explored this, because I didn't want, I didn't want to be able to call in and basically call a death in God's operating. Because like right now, where it's just me, if I'm in my office, and phones in the squad room rings, I didn't want to hear it, somebody could be calling from the services, I didn't want to hear it. So she has contacted Consolidated, we've talked to Consolidated, because what I wanted to have happen was actually, you know, one line rings in, and then there's just separate voicemail access for everybody. Unfortunately, from what it seems like to Consolidated right now, like, because of the layout, not like it's just gonna be set up. So every phone number, every phone has to have its own separate phone number. So she is working with them, like I said, as a reason, it's the day for me. And I believe at this point, we're gonna have a few more conversations with CCF, but I believe there is a way to kind of enter routing, where she can route the phone numbers to merge, if you will.
Yeah, if you heard it, we have the same, we have Consolidated out there, and it's different extent.
Consolidated has been very difficult, that's the actual caveat of it.
Yeah.
As far as like picking up some phones, it has, I put it at by the end of the week, to have, to have a call to also, by the end of the week, I wish that would be made available as far as operational. But she is, she now has access, she can log into our Consolidated account, she can reset passwords for voicemail, she can assign the phone numbers to different people, she can assign your routing call on. Which is something I don't think we really have anybody as a reason to do.
Yeah.
All right, so everybody's got, move on to fire?
Yes, sorry.
So as far as the fire department goes, in the month of April, we had twenty-six calls for service. Of that, nineteen, I don't know why I put it too much, but I'll just see, nineteen of those were EMS calls, the rest being fire service calls. Our EMS billing for the month was billed out at fourteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars, our estimated collectible funds are thirteen thousand, one thirty-three, that's on Medicare, Medicaid adjustment. I added that in this month, so basically Medicare, Medicaid pay us a set amount, depending on the level of the call, whether it's a GLS call, ALS one, ALS two. So there's what they generate automatically to the bill, when we get a Medicare, Medicaid adjustment, which is what they'll pay income. This is significantly higher percentage than what we normally see in our care mix, we just happen to have a bunch of patients in private insurance, and private insurance generally pays the whole bill, so. We're at about a sixty-one percent collectible rate from what we build generally, and that's the average for the area, so this is significantly higher than just how the policy would have been. Month end for EMS transports for the month of April, we're up a hundred and twenty-eight percent year over year, from the start of the year until this point. The biggest reasoning for that is just that we're covering around the calls now, so the majority of our, so now we're not calling as much mutual aid, we're transporting our own patients, so that's, at this point, as of today, we're up a hundred and seventy-two percent year over year, based on this one. So I just want to kind of give those to the team, we do a really good job of covering our own calls, and so that's nice to see. We had five mutual aid ambulances from Farmington into town, the month of April, one of those being to cover the second call, a lot of ambulances are getting to the hospital, we had an additional call, so I'm keen for that. Well, we've mutual aid to New Durham for medical aids. Last month, Silver Street for a motor vehicle accident, rollover. There's a motorcycle accident, we, we transported a patient to a port in the hospital, through trauma center. We responded mutual aid to New Durham, with Engine One, Ambulance Three, for a motor vehicle accident, the next day, or, the next day, myself and Chief Ferguson responded, how old are they, one and him? For a report of a second motor vehicle accident, these are both on the inside of it. So the first one was a head-on motor vehicle accident with multiple patients, and the second one ended up, we might have found, but I guess the vehicle got out of there. But it just kind of, I want to highlight that we have been responding mutual aid, helping your neighbors as well, so it's good to see. The overhead door work at the station has begun, you'll see the windows have been installed, there's still some more work yet to be done, from the door seals, the bottom panel. Second door from the right, it's bent, they're gonna replace that one of the panels, with fifteen thousand. So that will, that will be at, we'll pass it, we'll measure that and replace the seals, the bottom ones are still on the third. We ordered the replacement trim and siding for the, for the firehouse, that we got approved like two weeks ago. It was supposed to be in Friday, we see, we see it tomorrow, and then that work will begin pretty quickly here, so you'll see the firehouse step to a little bit of a makeover. We also have, Bruce Hunter is making us a new sign for the, for the firehouse, so we'll kind of, I am to give. So we'll have a nice face lift there. The shed has been moved over to the highway department, by the highway department, we appreciate that, they kind of moved it out of our way, so we've been working on the siding, coming up, trying to find over the shed. Engine four, the new fire truck is in production, we should have some pictures to share, Captain Boden's gonna put that up on Facebook shortly. We've gotten a couple pictures, but it's basically just a cab with a pump, so we'll not, not let's see those pictures, but this week, the body and the tank went on the truck, so it's gonna look a lot more like a fire truck, the next set of pictures we get, so. We'll get those up as soon as we can, and then we should have an exact date tomorrow, or when we're getting the truck. It's the second week of June, we just, we don't know, it's the end of the week, but we should know, hopefully, there'll be any delays, but they should be able to give us an exact date tomorrow. Assistant Chief Porto and Lieutenant Green are enrolled in E T classes, so that's awesome to see, kind of increase our capabilities, we get a, another provider on the road. We do also have a posting out for some pretty M VMS providers to cover some of their day shift gaps, it's posted on the Fire Academy website, which is how to go, the best avenue to find M VMS providers.
Can you send it over to me, please?
I can, I tried to just get a link from it, it couldn't really work that long, but I'll try to figure it out. So, that's kind of what we have going on right now, and what do you have any questions?
This pertains to the, I mean, we had something in here, maybe I missed out on something, or was that a town, we've said three quarters, are you looking for those?
Those got to.
Those were approved, and they've already been ordered.
I asked them to send this over, so we could put them up in there.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, those were ordered last week.
All right, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something, all right, thanks.
Here. All right, Dan.
Well, that seems to be the spot. Dan Phillips. President, Gloria.
Hi, Phil, Dan.
D A N, oh, it's been spelled other ways, too. This is from the last meeting, April fourteenth through May twelve, so we want to patch some potholes on Silver and Pinkham. Fix the stop, stop sign on Pinkham, let's just bend over a little bit, like one of the haul trucks, this has broken out of there, might have got into a little bit, but. Took the posted signs down, that was as of the sixteenth of April, so those, in case you guys have any fillers. We've been raking the dirt roads as needed, and we've been getting a lot of rain, so the as needed's been quite a bit, so, and we're gonna keep going forward with that. Did a driveway permit on Pinkham, and it was map eight, lot eleven seven, so it would basically be one of the lots that's off to the right. We had some heavy rains, so we were around checking culverts, and checking the roads, make sure we aren't getting any washouts, and taking care of the culverts, rust culverts and stuff, to make sure that we didn't have any water on the road, we've been pretty lucky so far. We did drop off the new truck for the body and the plow gear, should be done this week, so hopefully, we'll get up there, pick that up. While we're on that, they've asked us, Viking, because the truck is, as they say, such a nice truck, they want to feature it up at the mountain of demonstrations, which is a public works. It's, it's to get information on tractors, trucks, plows, all, all types of gear and everything, and that's gonna be up by Lake Suntory and Newbury, and so. I've asked them, and we're gonna bring the truck up there, so it'll be featured up there. While we're up there, we will be checking on side little mowers and stuff, flat mowers and stuff like that, to get fitted to the loader, so we will be gathering information as we go up there. That will be the twenty-second of May, so we'll be up there on that day. We put the summer tires on truck number one, we have studded tires that we run in the winter, we changed those over to the summer tires, we had the headlight out, we did that, taken care of. We had a sinkhole forming up on Pheasant Road, which was basically one of the bigger pipes that goes across the road, the way that it is put together, you look in the pipe and you can't see the other end, so. When it was installed, it kind of goes that way, well, over time, there was probably a spot, so we, I put riprap in that, and fixed that, we kept our eye on it, it's been staying put, so we will keep our eye on that. There's nothing wrong with the culvert, it's just the way it was installed, and that was back when it was building, so we'll keep an eye on that. We did smooth up, a bit of buttermilk extension with the loader, and that's the, just the gravel portion, down to where the town portion ends, where we maintained, so we did take care of that. We checked on, checked on the contractor down on Pinkham, map eight, lot eleven two, and they're gonna be putting a marginal home in there, so we checked in with them, they started doing some work, they didn't have their driveway permit, they have since done the driveway permit. And so we were in contact with them, just let them know that they had some eyes on them, they're doing a good job, they just, you know, they just had a couple of things to be taken care of. Fixed, there was some chevrons that had gotten run over, and taken out by a tire accident, and one by a tree that had fallen down, and a couple of other tiptoes, so we, we fixed those up, up on Ridge Road. Basically, there's those yellow signs that up here around more of that, they don't show. We fixed those. We ordered the new military flags, which are in, and the fourteen American flags, which just came in, and we should be putting those up before the end of the week. We ordered the chemical toilet for the beach, it was supposed to be here tomorrow, but delivered today, so went over this morning, we cleaned out the beach. There were, the spot where the, where the, where the chemical toilet was, had some roots coming out, so we brought down some stone, put some three-quarter inch stone in there, and just kind of smoothed that up, so we wouldn't have a trip hazard going for that, and that is a handicap accessible, and that'll be there till later day, or a little after. So that's, that's already got on there. And as Jared said, we moved the shed for the fire department, so that they could get in and do their work, and they have some brush, and we'll get the chipper out, we'll, we'll get over there and assist you guys on taking care of that, and I've got some, a couple of other spots that I want to get some brush kept up, that we got piled up. And let's see, we just started taking out the Sanders and washing them to put them away, it doesn't seem like it, but four, four to five weeks ago, we were still applying them. So we do have two trucks that currently, we have the Sanders out of, we got the wings painted, so before we take those off the trucks, they're painted, they'll be put up, and in the fall, they'll be ready to be put back on. We'll do the same thing with the front plows, whatever needs to be painted, we'll have it painted, we'll put them out back, and then when we go to take them out, they'll all be done. Let's see, painted the wings, okay, we took the, took the lawnmower out, got that all checked out, and we did stop one of the lawns, and we done again, looking at them, but that's all set, ready to go, so we'll be taking care of the lawns out here, over at the municipal building, down behind PD and all that. So that'll be ongoing, again, took the fuel pump readings, we got those over to Tim. Had to get the, the older truck, the O three, which is sitting right out here, getting that ready to go off the bid, we're just, I have to take the sander out of the smaller truck, which is going on the new truck. We're gonna utilize that sander on the new truck, because it's a stainless steel one, and we all know stainless steel's the way to go. So the bed on that new truck is also stainless steel, so we won't have to worry about that getting rusted out, it's actually lasted this part of the lot. So the O three is out here, I, we have the wing and the plow that was on that truck, we're gonna keep those for a spare, so I had to take that off, the, the plow and the wing that we had on there, and the back brakes were seized up, so I had to drag that out, get those off, unseize them, but it's, it's, it's good to go now, so. We'll be putting that out. On, on auction, or for sale. I had a drainage issue over at forty-two Spruce that a gentleman had called about, and basically, he had a driveway culvert at the end of his driveway, that over the years had gotten filled in and everything, wasn't aware that they had the culvert there. Little bit of ditching we'll do over there, and I went over and talked to the gentleman tonight before I came over, so we'll take care of that issue for him. Did another driveway permit, the one I was talking about earlier, map eight, log eleven two, eleven dash two, so they did good out, they did come in, pay their, pay their permit fee, and we took care of that. The last thing I have is, New Durham had called, and they would like to use the message board again, for a couple of weeks. Now, I figured I, I told them I would come in and ask, because we have some things coming up for thirty-first, I think you have here, so the two week, if it was for a couple of days, I'd, I'd probably say yes, without even, you know, I would normally ask, and make sure it was all okay before we, because we've used it in the past, but. Where they want it for two weeks, and eight months. You're probably gonna want your.
I know, yeah.
Clean them in there, and that's for the thirty-first, correct?
It is.
Right, so what I can do is I'll, I'll give them a call and say, there, I gave them all the information off of ours, model number and all that, I took some pictures and sent it over to them, they're in the process of getting one purchased, or possibly two. So what I can do is I'll, I'll call them and just try to get a, a little more information on what days they were looking for, and tell them that we had some stuff that, that we really like to get posted on it. That's it.
So Tom, how come this week?
We have a, we have a broom that goes on the loader, and typically, typically what we would do is, we'd wait till it rains, and then go out, a lighter rain, and then sweep whatever there is, is there spots that you are concerned about?
No, it's, it's come up on that, on like, maybe the drama on the hands about being on shore, there's concerns about the sand on the roads and the street speakers, and you know, if you've had enough, some people don't do this, so we put the broom on the loader, and that's how you take care of the sand on.
Yeah, I just wondered how we're gonna take care of the sand on the dirt road over there. No, I just, the reality is, is we don't, we don't put much sand out there, so, yeah.
I know, I'm curious.
Typically, that's what we would do in the spring. If we had, if we had any spots, like intersections that were, I'm, hey, that's why they call it D-A-N, and they call it a spellmate too sometime. But, no, what we normally would do is we would normally put the broom on the loader, and if we had some intersections that were really bad, or if we had some roads that had, you know, the sand that you would typically see years ago, you'll see two stripes, one on each side, and then a couple in the middle, and then normally we would go take care of that, like down in the, down by the lake and all those areas there, and then maybe some intersections out here that might have been.
But it's not something we routinely do every spring?
We normally do it every spring, yes. And like I said, we normally wait until we get that light rain, because if you don't, it's a bunch of dust. So, and to spend the money that they get for a street sweeper, we just don't have, we don't have the curbing, we don't have the, and we don't, you know, we don't have the need for hiring a street sweeper to come out and do that. We can keep it up ourselves. Yep, not a problem. Any other? All set? Good.
Thank you.
Good. Chief?
Fifteen to all of that.
All right, a couple of quick things. You've all got the chief, so we have 166 calls for service. Of those, 36 turned into some form or fraction of a documented investigation. We had two arrests this month, three accidents. Of those three accidents, two were mutually aid. One was here in town, handled by us, and six more vehicles, I think, were destroyed. We continue to work on recruitment and bringing people forward, although we could bring a candidate forward today. I worked on a pay study as far as part-timers. I don't know if you guys want to discuss that briefly right now, or would like me to set that up for another time.
Yeah.
Basically, what I did was, I didn't do the legwork. Somebody else has recently done one, so I was able to get my hands on their pay study, and then did a little bit of cross-referencing with it. And in that, what I found was for part-time employment, the average, if somebody was a part-time employee with a full-time certification, meaning in other words, that at some point in their career, they were a full-time police officer, probably retired now, moving to a part-time work. The pay rates were anywhere from $26 to $30 an hour. There was only one agency that was at $26, the rest were in the ballpark of $28 to $30. I did do some math on that and calculated it out as far as hours, but that would equate to for us. Pretend we're not recording. Oh, no, I have it right here. I'm sorry. So, at the $28 an hour mark, that ultimately, based on our current budget, would give us 11.7 hours per week of part-time work. At the $26 an hour mark, that would give us 12.57 hours of our time per week. And then at the $30 hour mark, or $30 an hour mark, that would give us 10.88 hours based on the current budget that we have. So with that said, obviously, you know, I broke that down by a week to kind of over 52 weeks of an idea, but we wouldn't necessarily be loading for part-time every single week. So, if that is just an idea, of course, we'd hear how that works out. With the part-time, it would definitely be more seasonal, as far as, you know, it would be more heavy loaded come May through Labor Day, as opposed to, you know, the fall, the winter, or the rest of the year. One idea that I threw together for that, for the board to kind of think about, would be ultimately putting experience on. So again, these are all based on somebody with a part-time work over a full-time certification. My thoughts would be zero to 10 years of experience, 28 an hour, and then 10 to 15 years of experience, 29 an hour, and 15-plus years of full-time experience, $30. Based on the, based on the information I found, a lot of agencies don't, at least not in our general geographic, are using part-time at this point. I don't know necessarily if that's based on the need as more as it is the availability of it. Agencies have just kind of faded away from the part-time aspect, because bigger towns like Martin Luther constantly busy, and full-time employment is far, you know, more efficient for that, and so many smaller workhouse where part-time is definitely more beneficial. But as far as in our general geographic rate graph, we don't have a part-time pool, if you will, to compare to. Now, if you get up into the co-ops, they're not co-ops, I'm sorry, Carroll County area, Mass, and the free, possibly Conley, they, just like us, are fairly small. I think the agents where they use more part-time employment, that is where it most applies to business or data.
Chief, can I press a previous line real quick?
Yeah.
The last year was about the beginning of October. There was a person who we talked, we were interested in coming back or coming part-time?
Yes.
Can we have a quick question?
My understanding, when I took over, please, Chief, having a conversation with Chief Sobel, was that there was interaction between him and that candidate. At this point, that candidate was more of a, a candidate.
Oh, okay. Just curious.
So that was all I knew.
Fair.
And I liked it.
Yeah, okay.
So based on that, Chief Sobel is planning to come back and work part-time a little in the summer for us. We should probably see him within the next, I would estimate, three weeks. Between now and the, yeah, the sentence is a date, but we have a new contact communication as far as that in the summer as part-time. So that was kind of what I threw together as far as a pay range for it. Obviously, the pay rates are a little bit higher, because you're getting work out of them, you're getting full-time certified officers with experience, that can basically, you know, conduct a shift, if you will, without being monitored or regulated by a staff member or a full-time officer who's running the system. And with that said, with part-time, we're not making any of that, it's all part of the package or anything, the costs associated with that. So that's why the rates are typically traditionally from part-time, a little bit higher. So both of the numbers that I came up with, the scale was kind of what I came up with as an idea. Like I said, you know, zero to 10 years, and then 10 to 15, 15 plus.
Yeah.
So you guys are more than welcome to view that over, and just, we know your thoughts on it.
Okay.
And we can read us a little bit of your point. And I can absolutely send you the pay study if you'd like to see.
Actually, you could have it perfect.
I can send that to the VOS.
Thank you.
Worked with Homeland Security. Again, we had a meeting here at the Old Town Hall with Homeland Security, and with our surrounding neighbors, the Durham Fire Department, also kicked over for that meeting. I also met with the school multiple times over the course of the last month, just in relation to the drills, as far as lockdown, and we had discussions about lockdown drills and the operation of the school as far as how that all works. So all of the meetings that myself and Chief Willer had are all kind of coming in, and everything's going to start to roll together.
Were the kids involved in the lockdown?
What's that?
Were the kids involved in that process at all?
The lockdown drill.
The lockdown?
Yes, they were.
I didn't hear about that.
I know they did send it out on social media.
No, 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 from my son.
Oh.
Because that would have been the, yeah, that would have been the highlight of that.
Oh, basically, all they did was they announced lockdown drill.
Yeah.
And the teachers went through the process of logging it down. Myself and the principal then just walked through the school, checking all the doors to ensure that everybody followed the procedure.
So it must have been, oh, same enough for them.
Probably.
Okay.
I did meet with the school, and the chairman of the school board and the principal as far as the traffic patterns and the flow rate for the school, because we have been running some issues, not every day, but some days we're running issues as far as backflow of traffic for drop-off flowing down into Kings Highway and creating a traffic hazard. If I'm around and when I'm there, I get out and help direct the traffic, so we can get them in. But we did meet, we implemented a few things, and we're kind of in the trial phase right now of seeing if it works. There's some moving parts with it, so I've noticed that some days it doesn't work, but typically, when it's not working, it's because one of those moving parts is not where it should be, is supposed to be there. So I've been reporting that back to them to address on there as far as trying to make that work. So that's kind of a moving, moving object. I did speak with Dan over at the Highway Department. We are going to recalibrate and set the clocks as far as the school sign, because they're a little bit off as far as turning on, turning off. So we'll get that done in the coming week or two, which you did a great team remaining this school year. Still working on the evidence on it. That's just a work in progress. That'll continue to be a work in progress. We should hopefully be able to wrap that up and take all this stuff off. We did start our own prosecution now. We are no longer under the Sheriff's Department. We have handled multiple cases at this point at the cross-tier level over in Rochester District Court and at the Supreme Court. We've had some grand jury indictment on a lot of cases.
So they've been handled now?
Yes, I have.
That's all?
So the private attorneys, everybody's on board with it. The moving pieces are working very well with it. Tony is adapting well to it. It's a little bit of a learning flow for her, given that she's learning positions she's currently fulfilling, but also the ancillary part for going on the prosecution.
Add one of the gobbler ball?
What's that?
Add one of another gobbler ball?
Yes. And so everything with that so far is flowing down. We've implemented some procedural to make sure there's rule recite, nothing gets lost on our end, and that's some communication lines at this point with Sheriff's Department, just to make sure that nothing gets lost in translation during this transitional phase. But at this point, everything is, everything is removed. There might be some stuff out there still that we're dealing with as far as wrapping up, that we weren't necessarily involved in at the beginning, but we're now going to finish.
Yeah.
And that's all for the week. Continued annual training. We did set up our subscription with Police One. Police One is an online training program or regimen that's out there as well, which is recognized by the Hampshire Police Department for training, which allows us to have the ability to fulfill the requirement hours of training without necessarily having to be a officer and send them up to Congress. Police Department can have them out of town, available for service if they have that requirement. The requirements are now at 24 hours, being of ancillary training, a couple of required training. So Police One will help us as far as allowing them to complete those hours of training here in town, without having to be down with the requirement. We did add a workstation to the police department as well, so that in the future, when we forward, once we're fully staffed, and we have part-time staffing as well, there'll be helpful working stations for employees that will all have their area or be able to, as far as, as far as with the database system. So we're working on the phone system, like I said earlier. Just trying to streamline that, because I did run into an issue where such as Strapper County Dispatch, they have a phone number, which they thought was the direct line into the police department, but it rings through a hall down the back room. And so if I sound bad, Tony, when that phone rings, we don't necessarily hear it. But there's been occasions where I, Eric, we might run down the hallway and try to answer. So we're still working on that. I put a deadline at this Friday to have that resolved, because at this point, I just know a lot of people will call, and they wind up ringing out there, and they think nobody is available here in town.
Sure.
Or the national, or here. So we have utilized the department's speed drill.
I've been.
Noticed or not, been in multiple locations throughout the town. It is currently up on Kings Highway. Still listening to feedback from residents of the town as far as areas that they see issues, and we're just utilizing it at this point as a very good educational tool for people. I've received very positive feedback from residents of the town, and we will continue throughout the summer months to just be moving into different locations throughout the town.
On 133, Andrew, where is the park?
Yep, it's been out on Silver Street, it's on Governors, it's on 153, Bridge Road, and it's up on Lakesense and Kings Highway. I did reach out as far as, follow up with you folks, as far as the speed limit on 153. I did reach out to the Director of Transportation with the State of the Cancer. That is something that they, as I understand it, already have on their radar, and they have meetings with local DOT directors, or I'm not sure exactly what the title is, DOT sheds, but that is already on their list of meetings and drive-arounds. He did urge me to just keep prodding. He said, he said it's on the list, and that to bear with him, they're working through it. But in his email, he did say, you know, basically, keep prodding to make sure that it doesn't completely fall off the rise. So I'll continue to do that, and if there's anything on the board that's needed, that'll be needed a lot to get that in the way. We did meet with Cunningham Security. We did walk through of all the buildings as far as the fire protection and the fire monitoring. They came around, they looked at all the systems, checked all the systems. I also had them look at the security system down to the police department, because currently, the security system of the police department is monitored by MERS, and everything else in the town is monitored by Cunningham. So I did send a quote to the VOSE though, as far as that goes, as far as getting on fire systems back online. In that quote, there's also, you'll see it's outlined in there, would be them taking over the security at the police department as well, and that way they're a big partner by the same company. But that's in your, you should have that. I sent that last week, so that should be an area that's for, to do whatever you guys want to do. Other than that, just to wrap it up, we answered all, all calls for service in the community with minimal assistance from the Hampshire State Police. This past month, I believe there was a total of, it's going to quote me on this, but I think there was three or four calls for service here in the community that were not handled directly by the PD. Of those three or four, though, I did receive four calls on two occasions from state police on Sunday evenings, just requiring if I was around and could respond, because the closest true friend they had was in Portland. At which point I said absolutely, and I came out and dealt with the situation. So, in a realistic world, they actually put feet on the ground right now, which is pretty good.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, and that's all.
Any questions?
I'm Clark Tax Collector. Got the flexing report summary for April. Capital $16,847.44. Interesting penalty was $1,077.18. Net proceeds for the month were $17,924.20. The proceeds for the month was $17,924.62. The credits were on a finding balance of $4,028.17. Refunded debatment was $2,461. Let's see. Move to the drawer. The total deposit is for $5,169.94. The grand full liquidating credit card was $62,296.94. Any questions? Nope. Okay. See, moving on to trigger. All right. So April has been a successful month. All right, the list of unsecured 2324 checks has been reduced, thanks to the small part that we can use. So I have that document showing. Profile bank was extremely helpful, and maintenance process happened as well. All right, so our beginning balance was $1,787,433.23. We have $125,897.11 in deposits, and our total left of deposits was $1,913,333.94. three hundred thirty-three dollars, ninety-four cents. Withdrawals was five hundred thirteen thousand, no, one hundred ninety-three dollars, ninety-three cents. Ending bank statement balance was one million, four hundred, one, uh, four hundred, four hundred thousand, one, I cannot speak today. Was one million, four hundred one thousand, four hundred twenty-three dollars, thirty-eight cents. The speaking town balance was ninety, nine hundred twenty-four thousand, four hundred thirty-nine thousand, eighty-two cents. Ending balance of two million, three hundred forty-five dollars, sorry, two million, three hundred forty-five thousand, eight hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty cents. That's available is two million, three hundred twenty thousand, six hundred ninety-four dollars and fifteen cents. Any questions on the search report?
About the forty-one, because I'm looking at, listen, if this gentleman doesn't work close out any more.
No, if you look at, uh, it's gotta be, uh, be replaced when it comes payable to each person and ask them to cash it within two or three weeks, that would affect them a little bit. So these will actually be clear out, was the, you know? You know, so they're clear out because we, because what we gotta do is then those payable checks, get cash, avoid those, and then clear, I mean, you.
Why is the rec, um, the voided check, why is that still on the, you?
That was the double check. No, because she's showing is avoided now, it's not there now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So yeah, all these, yeah, they're taken care of.
Oh, those are the ones that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, so yeah. So she's showing her work.
Yep.
All right, any other questions? All right. Uh, do you have any Carl here?
Did we get anything, Mike?
I haven't got anything from Carl. What time is that meeting tomorrow night against?
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty.
If you can get something from Carl, at least maybe answer the V O S.
Yeah, yeah, I can try.
Yeah, Kate, did we get, did we get a list that could probably lock some of your, you have a question?
Yes. Remember, it was requested that Mr. Rain and Mr. Will do that. I didn't forget.
All right, so.
I do have three things here, so actually Ken gave me this. We got an email from, um, Tom Daniels in the Wakefield Lions Club and they want to put a eye.
Oh, yes, that's right. I forgot to mention.
Yep, nope, that's fine. It was, it was.
So what's got, they want to put a eyeglass box, if you will, outside one of the town buildings.
Well, is it gonna be outside the town or will it be inside?
No, it'll be outside.
Oh.
It'd be, it. Yeah, exactly.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So it's like, yeah, it's like in all the, you know, it's all mailbox that they've redone and it's actually very nice looking.
So, so I built a den. I mean, I don't have a problem with doing it. I guess where would be the best place over, if we're putting it in the community, we're doing a den for location, like for lowing and whatever, what would be the best?
So what are they, what are they looking to do?
It's like an old mailbox they want to put by municipal buildings and people drop off eyeglasses. So that way then what they do is then they take those eyeglasses and they get them recycled or re, refurbished and then they actually bring them to other countries because unfortunately they can't be used in the U.S.
So I would just look to you, and where would be the best location to not income?
I would say if, if they can make it happen, would probably be right here in between the door for coming in here and the, uh.
So you all think the municipal building, you think here?
I think over here just because, um, it's a little more accessible and it's not, you know, it's not something like, the, the, the spot that would stand out to me would be near the front door, but that might be a, an issue for, I don't know how, you know, how much space it would take up, but maybe on that front porch, but.
It's about the same size as a mailbox.
Yeah.
Like a, what's a post office mailbox?
Post office mailbox, where you pull the thing and.
Right, so I would, I would say probably right over here and then we post it on the, on the website that way there people could drive in.
Perfect.
Open the mailbox, drop it off and then carry on and not really tie up things over, not that they're gonna be lined up, but, uh.
So the board's acceptable to that? Well, I'll do, since I've talked to them a couple of times, I'll reach back up to them tomorrow and blend up.
Yeah.
I would, and that's what I would say is that spot.
Perfect.
Right, you know, I think there's enough room there. Once the sidewalk goes in over here, the handicap private spot would be, you know, it's not be over there.
Yep.
And I do have two other things, just comments. So, um, Aflac, Kim and I had this conversation regarding Aflac and I followed up with Jared earlier. Um, there was a question about those deductions coming out of payroll and because they're only part-time, whether they would get enough hours to pay for. So we're going to go forward with, um, Jared had commented, people, so people will sign up on the right doors to do it. So we are going to start with having it come out of the prison. If we find it becomes an issue, we'll monitor for like maybe a couple of months, whatever. If it becomes an issue, then we're going to, not, we'll apply it to.
Right, so, so have we talked to Mark about getting that set up?
I, I don't know. I mean, Kim has been in contact with him about that, but I was just talking.
Yes, because if it comes out of their payroll, you have to set up a G L for each problem.
Problems, no, no, no. No, the only issue I was having, we were having is whether they were having money, but I think we can just set up one for Aflac.
All right, so.
It's up to them to fix this thing.
Have we, have we been in touch with Mark though about setting this up or pitch for it?
Yes, I was in, I was in early yesterday.
Perfect.
Yeah, he was having some issues and I had some more questions, so I may go.
As long as you guys are tuned in, T, that's good.
So if you just wanna pass that information on here, that, you know, if that happens. And then the last item I had was, I just wanted to make note, we received, I think two weeks ago now, a nine-one-eight request from Parkville. Um, I had forwarded that along because it sounded like most of the information that was gonna be required was going to be either from the town clerk or minutes, town, annual minutes, or from.
Well, it looked like someone was gonna be new from assessing too.
Well, no, that's what I was gonna say, after assessing.
And she's been on vacation, so.
Yeah, but I just want, so I'd like to know that we received that, I did respond to that saying.
All that.
We have to respond within five days.
Right.
Um, so I could know that new resource limits, uh, that we would be getting, letting them know what we are having, I think, being, whatever, but that is outgoing, so.
Yep, that's all that.
Fall under either the town clerk or assessing, so that's all I have.
Yeah. Will?
Yep. Uh, May thirty-first, we obtained use of the Middleton Elementary School for the rec to have a crap fair there. Um, we could get probably double or more amount of tables that we couldn't hear and we've got nineteen, I think nineteen vendors signed up so far, but we're still looking for a few more vendors. Um, but we will be open from eleven to four, so spread the word. And Old Woman Celebration, August twenty-second, mark your calendars. Um, we'd like to celebrate, huh? It's a Friday night. Um, we will be celebrating Middleton's two-hundred-and-forty-eighth birthday, which was actually in March. Um, and we'd like to do the cha-cha truck again, if we can get you guys all involved. And, uh, whatever ideas you have, if anybody has ideas, um, we're looking for a new band. Our band unfortunately isn't going to make it this year. Yeah, can't be in two places at once. Um, but we'll get it back for next year. So, uh, we are looking for a band. We do have a vendor for food, the Thai trucks that came last year will be coming. Um, and yeah, if anybody's got any ideas, we're open to suggestions. They get bigger and better every year.
All right, Gracie?
We have a resident that's doing some work over on Silver Street. And in that process, they have, um, some town property, which was a stone wall, several trees, um, there's some lumber cracking on the road right now, like something that we need to, we're bringing, we need to possibly go on the road, we're gonna log out in there.
The number's four and stuff. So you're aware of what's going on?
Well.
Yeah.
It's hard not to when you drive down there.
It's very.
They also, uh, I wouldn't point you from, don't, yeah, it's from more of the, you know, in, for the, and so.
I went there, let me. So, Mike, we need to have Carl.
No, we might.
Yeah. Because the expectation was that they would repair at least the stone wall and then, um, we can have, it's about half a difference, we can have things becoming, you know, seeing that, uh, which is they potentially could be cutting the corner of the, um, when we're in trouble.
There, there was a property pin that was at the corner here, that big pine tree that is now flat, it's not gone, but I would say it's flat now. Um, and my, my take on it is, uh, I would like to have a conversation with them as far as the approach to the road, but it's, it's not something I was gonna go looking for because of the past, so, um, if we get a phone call, we could set up a time.
Well, yeah, while we have Carl set coming up.
Right, that, you know, we're there, we can do it officially, not, you know.
With, you know, it's a UN puff league.
Yeah, yeah.
Make sure that.
It would be nice to have, um, a witness to the conversation.
Exactly.
I guess, just to see why.
No, absolutely, yeah.
And I have no, I have no trouble, um, speaking with them on what we would specify for, because the, the road that's in there now is basically a woods road. It's not designed for log trucks to be coming in and out of. So the approach, I want at least fifty feet back, um, similar to what you see all the other live companies do, approaching in one fifty-three, but it's logging that stone line with the stone wall.
Yeah, they're on.
Yeah, so that they don't, so they don't drag the material out.
So Mike, are you, uh, okay with, on the Carl and arrange that?
Yeah, I'll arrange that to Carl.
The beef as well?
Yeah, that night that you sent me the pictures, I drove down there to see if the homeowner was there. Um, there was no one there, but those trucks were pretty far into the woods already, so.
I'll just say that as a resident and, now, look, I'm not, you know, I'm a special stone wall that's probably over two years old, that he doesn't even know. Um, you know, that is something I have to put back in up.
Yep.
Certainly, if you fail, you get that tiny man, um, lots of nature man. Why are we going out on the other side? The gate should have been, if there were one tree that's on his block, it should come down and, I mean, all the time, I have to do a business for a certain people, so I want to stay on this one line there.
Yep. Yeah.
No, I can, so part of it is, is I can follow up with Robin and what comes, uh, intent to cut, you know, intent to cut now, and we said, can we watch out? Because that all gets filed with the state and saying that we have some concerns about this and we can bring in force, which, for instance.
Does the, uh, force makers of that jurisdiction, I can call them tomorrow.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Perfect, Scott, thanks.
Do they on the intent to cut, do they put a rock acreage that they're looking at or not?
I was unable to find it, if we guys wait till. Yeah, I was gonna say, we'll follow up with Robin, find out tomorrow, yeah. She probably has a coffee.
Whatever you need, like I said, I would like to have.
Yep.
Yeah, no, we would have a, we'll make sure you provide the coffee.
Did this one of them sign you?
Yes.
But you don't have a car?
We do, I just couldn't, I couldn't find.
Put our hands on it.
On vacation and I couldn't remember the acreage on, off my top of my head.
I'm on vacation for a month.
Oh, wow, yeah. They have like sixty-three acres.
Yeah, it's all sixty-seven, sixty-six.
Sixty-seven.
Yeah.
Sixty-seven, okay.
But I don't know what it is. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's all.
All right. Any public comment?
I'd be brief here. Uh, I was hoping to see the code enforcement officer and talk about some of the lots in town. We do have a code, I understand, on books about unregistered vehicles on properties.
Mm-hmm.
And I have mentioned to you a couple of times about some of the specific lots. And I was given the impression from him that it was financially unfeasible to pursue the matter because of having out there, I'm not sure what the situation is, but I would like to see a couple of these lots addressed as far as getting.
I think, Mike, I think. Oh, Mike is, uh.
So I've been, I'm Carl's liaison. Um, I actually have been working with Carl on some issues in town as well as police chief and fire chief as well. Uh, I am taking a class next month for code enforcement to try to help Carl out and get to know the laws a little bit better to help him out because there are a lot of things in town that I've seen, we've all seen, people don't care about their property. Um, I rent my property, I take very well, I take a lot of pride in my property to make sure it's clean.
Well, the landlord issues besides the environmental and all that, it also does affect property value.
I, I did try to get Carl here tonight. Um, he did have a prior engagement, which the next month he will be here. He did tell me that he was gonna try to be here.
It's unfortunate that in a town like this, so many people have several hats to wear.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, so going back to that, I am trying to work with Carl and trying to get a lot of this rectified, so. It, it makes me mad driving down the street and seeing all that as well, and people just don't care.
In addition to which, I'll make a question and answer this, do we have a recourse of some kind of delivery, if somebody's potlittering, do we have or do we apply for it, is there?
Yeah, it could be, right?
So generalized littering, if you're two-hundred-and-eighty adults, five, that's, you throw a dump out, and then obviously.
You want more of the government.
Well, by just not knowing exactly what you're speaking of, then you have the instance of somebody actually going, uh, you know, like I said, oh, this past fall, we had an incident on Dr. Rover, somebody actually went down and dumped a truck over.
Can I see the pictures of the property that we have before we link it up?
So there's, there's two different, there's two different, there, there are avenues and channels for that, but it's all kind of a service.
Impressing that situation, uh, we've got Old Woman Link coming up. Maybe we could do some kind of a, a town reunification along with all of that. It's a question of maybe surprises for somebody to clean up the street or clean up, thank you, for someone that does the most mileage of cleaning up.
I know there's a lot of kids in town and their, their parents as well will walk several streets in this town and pick up trash and litter along the sides of the streets and I'm not sure if Dan picks them up or, do you guys pick them up?
The blue bags, yes. And we have that, there was a resident on Silver Street, and I believe Bonnie still has some in the bag, and we do get low on those.
We are out the bump.
We are out of them, I have like a couple left on my own.
Okay, yeah, so normally what we have is, um, you know, we, we'll see them either coming in or, or, and then we'll pick those, those bags up and take their, um, and we'll work on, get you a couple more cases.
That'd be great.
That we're there.
I haven't done the back stretch or the, towards the road in a while, but for our property, all the way up to Green Road, we'll find there.
We appreciate that.
I would.
Good, but I did, we were waiting for ideas, so if we can, bring some.
Anybody else? No?
I'll let the motion man do it, we'll, well.
All over the table?
Second.
All over the table?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.